The AG came down on Towne and Stoughton for not doing that.
Hello, everybody. This is the Dayton Board of Selectmen meet regular meeting on Wednesday, December 6, 2017. And this meeting is being shown live on Channel 9. It's also being recorded and will be shown periodically throughout the next week. It'll also be on our, on the website. Okay, thank you. Let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to move it up a little bit. We're going to do public input. I thought we'd have more people from the public. But I wanted to say a couple of things. You know, we had the stuff a cruiser last Saturday and it was a tremendous success. And I want to thank everybody that stopped by and donated things to that. It was, was great. It was also, thank the fire department, the police department, because they were all there. And it was a wonderful opportunity. Everybody got together. And I think it really speaks to what our town is about. Everybody was contributing and participating and it was very good. The other thing I wanted to mention was, maybe I'll do this one later when we do these things. Okay. What you do, everybody, this is Mallory Aaronstein, our new town administrator who just started on Monday.
She's already given a report.
She's given her report.
That's right. Hello. It's been a busy week so far. It's been great. So this morning, apparently the town of Dayton has been on the wish list for Southeastern Regional Services Group, which is a public purchasing group of local towns in the area contiguous. So you do have to be invited. And they reached out through West Bridgewater, who knew that I was coming here, and asked us to attend and invited us. So I invited Tom Ferry, the highway superintendent, as well as the town accountant, who was actually unable to make it, and Kahal O'Brien to go to their open house, which was a meeting. We got to sit in on their meeting and ask our questions and see how it was. And I did bring back a, if I take my best down, a brochure for all of you that just gives the overall, and I have some of these in my office, if anybody wants to see them, I took a whole stack, but to give you an overview of what Sursage does. So they're public purchasing and it is a way of these towns to get together and save some money on things like paper, office supplies, highway, you know, chemicals and treatments, materials, asphalt, curbing, the gamut. We, what a town would do is put together what they would need, you know, not exactly. Of course, you can't predict the future, but what they would need. And the, this woman, Maura, goes out, she puts together all the procurement. And she also handles bid protests, which is a huge bonus if anything should go wrong. She can also be the hub if there is a company that perhaps many towns have had a problem with. She'll keep that documentation and the town wouldn't be forced to use somebody that might be subpar but didn't have the documentation. So she takes care of that. So it's a great resource. There is a cost to it, but you know, as a West Bridgewater employee, we found great benefits into it. Not only is it a time saver, it's just easy. It makes it easy.
So Tom wouldn't have to go out and do what he does to request bids?
Right.
He would just go to them and they would request the bids or?
They take care of it.
They can take care of it.
And vendors like it because they get access to all of these towns. So even something as simple as buying a ream of paper. Right now Karen has to go through three different vendors, make sure that she's looking at the exact same paper.
Right.
Make sure that she's ordering the lowest cost and that could change every day. Maybe one's on sale. So, and then somebody else in another office is probably doing that same thing, which is just a waste of time. If one person can say, oh, I've already found the lowest paper, it's these guys.
Yep.
And then you can work with them. There's a note in that brochure that they, sometimes people will argue, well, the state bid list will take care of this for us. Sometimes they're right on, you know, they're the same low cost. Other times, this group can be lower. And they had an example about gasoline, that they were seven cents below, which makes an impact. You know, you've got a heavy snow year, snowfall year, we want low gas. So anyway, it's something to talk about. Where the town accountant was not available, I do want to fill her in. Maura has offered to come down, have a one-on-one meeting with us. So of course I'll keep you apprised of that. But I'd like Jen to sit in and, you know, talk about it. But I wanted to bring this. I think it's a great tool. I think Tom liked it, Kahal liked it. We took back the documentation. The two of them are going to compare their notes with what they have now and see if there really is a savings. And you know, we'll go from there. But it's a $4,100 dues every year. I've asked Maura a series of questions, you know, do we join, if we have the funds available and we join mid-year, can we get prorated or something like that? So that's up in, up in the air, but I think everybody's.
For West Bridgewater, and I don't know if you guys like actually sat out and did like the math and everything, but $4,100 doesn't seem like a lot in terms of what you'll get from being in the program or being in this coalition. Did you find that it was worth the cost, meaning the time that the contracted employees spend doing this research? They're not doing their actual job. They're spending it, you know, looking up pricing information.
They're looking up paper pricing.
Correct.
For something as simple and a commodity, I mean, that's used all the time. And then I, you know, can't, somebody like Karen. Karen is very busy. You know, she has now four bosses that are demanding her to do stuff.
I'm not that demanding.
No, I know. Just kidding. But she's like doing the work for, plus people that come in, businesses. So she handles a lot. For her to spend an hour working on something that, a job that could, somebody already did, or maybe down the hall, maybe Pam, just for an example, maybe Pam's doing it too at the same time. Well, why are we double working on the same item every month that we need to order paper? This is a bulk, you can order in bulk.
Yeah. This says, this says some information from Pen five 17 where it says the town of Rentham, which is 10,900 population, saved $15,000 just on office supplies.
Office supplies.
So that's pretty, we're a little smaller than that, but not much.
The other great thing about this, which I think is its biggest benefit, is that you don't, the town doesn't, if the town thinks it can find a better deal on its own, it doesn't have to use what they do. Or what I learned today, and I did not know, this is fabulous. If one town in the whole consortium has had an issue with one company that happened to be the low bidder in some item, and they had an issue, Maura would be, and she had the documentation, or the town had appropriate documentation that would suffice legally, Maura would go out and draft new documents and contracts with the next lowest bidder specific to that town. And I just love that flexibility, where we're not going to be roped into using somebody that we have bad experiences with, just because the whole group is. So it's that, the downside of joining a group is always like, well, we have to do what they do. We don't here. So that's great. That's great.
Fantastic.
But again, yeah.
Thank you.
Will the purchase of gasoline be done with, in local communities? Like right now, our fleet, I'll call it, uses certain stations, okay? Because we don't have a lot to choose from. So would the contract be with the local stations?
No. So that would be if we had our own tank. We would, they would truck in, whoever won that bid and it would be ours.
Oh, okay.
But we don't have that facility, so we wouldn't participate in that bid.
Okay. Okay.
Fantastic though.
You're welcome. So to be continued on that, again, I'm going to reach out and, you know, if anybody, Kahal and Tom, if either of them have more questions as they get through it, we're going to address those and bring them to Maura and.
I actually have one question, Selectmen Gulart, you might have more insight on this. In the examples of our successes, does mention school districts. Is it, is it going to be your intention to try to involve the regional school district in this as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Because they probably have the most savings. They purchase the most stuff.
So we specifically asked this because what happens if Rehoboth doesn't want to do it? And Rehoboth was invited.
They want to save money. They'll want to save money.
Rehoboth was invited and after this open house event, declined. But it, I did mean to bring it up to Dr. Azar today and I actually forgot. But it, it could be a little premature anyway after this, but that's definitely something we want to look at. One of my questions to Maura is, because we have, the North State Water District is its own entity, is, are we paying, you know, $4,100 for all of Dayton, you know, as the crow flies out, like our whole border? Or is everybody going to be subject to the dues?
They have their own separate, yeah.
Well, that's the question. And if not, can we share the cost and, you know, save the town even more?
Because I don't think Rehoboth entering into it would make any difference because the school, the school is going to purchase what they purchased.
Correct.
So it would be theirs.
Based on the budget.
But the question is, can they come in under, so we pay the $4,100.
Yeah.
Are they included in that? Or do they have to do their own?
I see.
And what happens if Rehoboth says no?
Yeah.
You know, what do we do there? So that's, she had to look into that because that is definitely it.
So could we start, if this is something we want to do after we have the meetings and bring everybody on board? Is this something that as a municipality we could enter? The schools could then decide based on, you know, the results that they see us having with this collaboration, to enter it themselves at a later date?
That's what I'm trying to figure out with Maura. Like how does the, how does a school fit in there and can they fall under our umbrella? And is this an option for them? But certainly it's a savings. I agree, the schools go through so much, so it would be a savings for them. And of course, everybody likes a savings. So we're, we're working on that.
Okay.
And my other item is actually further down in the new business, so I'll just continue. So thanks.
Do you know if any regional school districts are involved, like Bristol Plymouth?
Um, you know, I don't know that answer.
Because I'm looking at the communities here and I see BP communities here.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I can certainly reach out to the principal or the superintendent over there and, and find out if they participate.
Because I'm looking at the communities and I'm thinking, you know, a number of them, not all, but a number of these belong to that, that regional school district. Now, obviously, they probably have a separate membership fee, but to be able to do this and save the money.
Because Bristol Aggie, I mean, they're in our, they're in Dayton, would they be eligible? Well, you'll find all that.
And that's the question. Yep, that's the question.
Years ago, when we used to bid fuel oil at the school level, we would bid school fuel for the member towns. And it was understood that if whoever got the bid for number two, we're at gas, we have gas now, but when we had number two fuels and number six, whoever used it, and all the town buildings could get that bid also, they would get the discounted price. So maybe this will work that way.
Okay. So next item is the poll hearing to install three new polls on Cedar Street.
Is anybody here?
I saw a guy with, yeah, I saw a gentleman with some plans, but I don't know where he went.
Are they, are they supposed to be here?
It's supposed to be here.
Well, let's put it aside if they're not.
Did we give them a time? Do we know?
I don't know.
If it's a hearing, you usually give them a time.
Yeah, that's good.
Yes, we did give them a time.
Was it quarter up? Do you know what time?
I know what time it is, but that notice that we gave them, and she emailed back that you might be an engineer attempting.
Okay. Well, we can always go back to.
Yeah, we'll just put it aside and come back. Okay, the old business, the police chief.
What about, what about this one?
She's, that's down below two.
Oh, you're moving that one?
That's new business, 7A.
It's both places.
It's going to be 7A?
Yep.
You just have it double on the agenda.
Oh, okay. All right. Okay.
So the police chief's contract.
Thank you.
Did you guys give a chance to look at these?
I did. I know.
Chief, it was just a dollar.
It was just a dollar.
It was one other thing that he wanted put forward.
Was this the sick pay?
Yes.
Sherman Taylor?
He just wanted, you know, we, what did I give you?
He wanted what the rank and file.
He wanted, he wanted it to be written into the contract, because the contract with all the other ones says whatever the, whatever the union gets, but he just wanted it.
So you just copy and paste it from that contract?
Yes, exactly.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I saw that.
Okay. So then I would entertain a motion to ratify this or approve this and then.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we ratify the negotiated contract for FY 18 with the chief, Robert McDonald.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. We will get that going. That's, okay. The next item is the request by the fire chief for ambulance billing write-offs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So I think, as I recall, last meeting, we, we had, we put this aside because we had a question about what the total was. And I think that Chief McGee has come back and the total that he's recommending be written off right here is $93,189.56.
How much are you getting, 93?
93,189.56.
Okay, I saw the, I saw the chief Saturday at the stuff cruiser. And I told him that Brett and I had said we wanted to take the pounds of paper we have and compare it to what he's writing off so that we can get rid of the stuff that he is considering, because the number is higher than that. So.
Not, not what he's writing off though, not, not what we're going to approve tonight.
Well, we wanted to make sure we went back to the beginning. That was the thing.
Right. Yeah.
Did you still want to see his stuff? We had talked about that. Because when I said I want to meet with him, because we get all that stuff.
I think if we, if we approve this and write this off, anything else that's going to, going to go away, he's going to have to come back to us anyway.
Okay, but what I'm saying to you is, we haven't had a chance to even look at what he's got there and what we've got, because.
When you say we, what do you?
Brett and I have been involved in this, I'll call it nightmare since the beginning.
We have like stacks and stacks of like sheets like that.
Comcast, I keep saying Comcast reports. And what we said, what last week was, we didn't know the door was, but we said, we just want to get those things out and say to the chief, this is where we are. Is it all inclusive with what so far you have recommended? And I assume he's going to say yes. If not, and there's a difference, we're going to say, what about this one? All right. Then, once he's aware of any questions we have, our stuff he has to check, we can get rid of this stuff, as long as he's got the information.
Right.
The other thing too is, because of the, the volume of paper that has been, reports that were submitted to the town of Dayton, that resulted, what we're trying to write off now, everything has to audit. And because we have all this paperwork that were quite frankly, official reports.
I know.
We want to make sure that this is all going to audit. So, so actually, I would like a little bit more time so that we, Chris said he'd meet with us and just, I think it's going to be a quick thing, just to go through it.
Because this, keep in mind, this is the stuff that's over 70 years old too.
So this is the oldest?
This is the oldest.
Right. But the stuff we got goes back to day one, I think.
So I'm, I'm not sure what you're looking for. Are we, thinking we might be able to collect some of that?
No, no. We want to make sure.
Just wants to match things up, correct?
Yeah. And it's not going to take a long time.
Can I make a proposal? I'm, I'm okay with that. My concern with writing off just some of it is losing track of where these were in the bigger picture. Why can't we take, you know, a week, discuss with the chief, whatever we need to do, why can't we just write them off at one time?
Because he's going to, it's going to take, it's going to take a long time, longer time to do that.
To go through.
You know, another option might be good. If you and I got copies of that, we took that pile of junk we've got.
And like checked off.
Go through it. And if, if in that old batch, there are any that stand out that don't appear there, that's the questions we have to ask him, so that we can send them to him and say, we didn't see these. Do you know about these? That will eliminate the lists, the pounds of paper we've got, and we're going to finite down so that Chris only has to look at a few things. And really, he won't have to meet with us.
And what, what number reconciles with what the town accountant has?
Well, we never.
That's the other thing.
That was the other thing. Every time we got a printout, there was a different number.
Well, and it was, we were given different sheets. It was very confusing at the time. I would feel comfortable, and now mind you, chief, if you're watching, I feel comfortable with writing off what you've written here.
Yeah.
But my concern would be, we have stacks and stacks of papers, the town accountant has the same stacks of papers. I, I would feel a little more comfortable just getting the okay from the town accountant.
Well, the other thing is.
In that this coincides with what the chief has.
The other thing is, an auditor is going to look and say, did the selectmen vote to write it off? The question's going to be, yes. What was the backup to write it off? Well, the chief's list, yes. But did anybody look at the original documents, which is the junk that you and I have?
Well, yeah, that's what the chief has done, but I'm fine with that. So you want to make a motion to?
The problem, I will move to table for one week, acting on this.
All right, I'll second that.
If they say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Table for one week.
The problem was that every time the reports came out, the different, the totals were different. The accounts didn't even, you know, if we found them.
There needs to be, yeah, there needs to be reconciliation with the town accountant, because at the end of the day.
That's what I'm getting at.
At the end of it, I can guarantee, at the end of the day, it's not going to, it's not going to match up. And then you're going to have to make other decisions about adjusting that, writing that off.
Correct. Exactly.
And he, once he brings the next batch, because I'm sure there's going to be a few more batches. We could just go through the same process, so that when it comes to us for a vote, Brett and I will have crossed off more stuff and gotten rid of the junk.
Okay, I'm going to go a little out of.
Well, and just, for everybody watching, one of the issues was also, and you remember this, Selectmen Gulart as well, FFR had a particular account number, Comcast had a particular account number. They'd be the same total, but they look like two completely separate accounts. So you actually have to take some time to match them up. And there are a lot of accounts. So it, you know, it does take some time.
Okay.
But I'm, but I'm okay with next.
Table, table.
And I will say this for security purposes. When Dr. Z and I are through with the review and everything balances, the papers that we have will be shredded, because there is personal information. So rest assured, it's not going to be out there in the public.
Okay. Thank you. So new business, I'm going to go a little bit out of order, because cable committee is here and they want to talk about purchasing new equipment. So they can.
Excuse me. Are you from the utility company about the poll hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is going to be quicker.
Steve's also here to talk about the renewal license, right?
Yes.
Okay, but were you given a time for that hearing?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so we can't start till eight o'clock.
Okay, we got to wait for it then.
So let's do, let's do the equipment. Dave?
I'll have to take that hot seat podium and watch it for the last two minutes.
Better watch the screen, make sure they got you on camera probably.
A little break is.
A little break is.
There we go.
Let me just say this. So anyhow, I've been working with Enol, Enoli and Jim Redding and Ron Smith for a number of years. And you know, they retired and moved on. We've got a brand new committee, they're very talented, we're trying to get things moving. The equipment downstairs, like over 30 years old, it's had its time. Usually, you treat it like a computer. A computer lasts like three years and then after that, it's pretty much, you know, you got to write it off. Unfortunately, we're going to go through this every few years, like every seven years, we're going to have to upgrade to keep things up. So just going through a couple of things, like right now, you know, it's Channel 9, Andrew's taking care of the boards. That's, that's being done on a DVD that's running constantly. Those are like easy to break down. We want to go totally digital. So what we done as a committee, we, we went out to the three buyers that represent the state of Massachusetts. And I think you guys got a copy of that in front of you. It was Valley and it was HB and it was Integrated Solutions Group, we'll call them ISG. So I try to keep it fair as possible. I'm new at this, so basically I invited each per, each company to come over, take a look at our equipment, you know, and let us know what they can do for us. Valley came in at $36,000, which we thought was really high. You know, we're trying to protect the taxpayer's money as much as possible. HB came in at $28,000 and Integrated Services came in at $19,000. What I had to do in that case, when HB had that bid, at the time, ISG or Integrated Services, they had a different set of equipment they were bidding on. So what I did, I took HB, I eliminated all the prices, I gave it back to ISG and said, I want you to resubmit again, there's no prices on here, and give it back to me, so we'll keep you in the loop and keep you fair. And then he came in at $19,000. The reason why we like this particular person, they do work in Rehoboth, yeah, Seacock and Taunton, I'm sorry. And they refitted their cable system. They got a great response time, they're very responsible. And I think this is the way we like to go. And I think they're out of Norwood, Mass, so the travel time won't be that bad. Some of the things we want to do is like with the new system, I'm going to let Andrew talk in a minute, I want him to have this hot seat too.
He's like, no.
One of the things I want, if we go, you know, we want transparency, I know you guys want that too, so we're trying to keep Channel 9 going as much as possible. Along with the boards, we can have like a weather ticker down below, you know, if there's a snowstorm or something, we can, or some sort of crisis.
Road closures, things like that.
Yeah, we can put that out there. The other ability we'll have is be working from home, we can go onto a laptop, you guys call us or text us, say, hey Dave, you know, can you put this out there? We can do that.
From anywhere, right?
Yeah. But to do that, we need to start somewhere. Just to let you know, this is like one-third of the project. I still got two consoles downstairs, I kind of like not doing that great either. They're going to have to be replaced too.
So, but remind me, at the annual, at the, excuse me, the town meeting, it was approved for $25,000, correct?
Right.
So if you, if it's only going to cost $19,000 to refit a third of, of what needs to be replaced, is, are you going to look at possibly using the remainder?
We'd like to, you know, working with you guys and accountant or, or the town administrator to see what we can do. I mean, because for instance, like the meetings downstairs, they're coming in black and white. The system down is totally gone.
But it used to be color, so I know that that means it's going.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
It's been going.
It's, it's, it got to a point like every week we went down, every week we come to work, there's always something breaking down. So it's like, you know, we're at the point like, okay, guys, we're going to have to come together and put out a new system.
Can you promise me one thing?
What's that?
Please don't buy HD anything. We don't, we don't need HD. We just don't need it.
No, you're not.[1513.33]
No, 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 no.
Yeah, none of that.
Okay, so I guess...
Our contract doesn't allow us to...
Perfect, that's what I wanna hear.
Andrew, you wanna talk about the system a little bit?
Sure.
All right. So you, Selectmen and Town Administrator, you're okay with my bids?
Well, yeah, we'll...
Well, I got a question, I, I do have a question on...
Sure.
When all three got to come in, I assume they came in separately?
Yes.
And they looked, are you saying that Integrated Solutions didn't bid, two companies bid on one type of equipment, one brand, and this one came in on a different one? Or what does that mean?
Basically, he bid on like, like a small, smaller refit, because when he first came, I gave him a smaller list, and these two had basically the same list, but he had like, he was bidding on something way small, so I said, you know, "I want him, I want you to rebid one more time," and that's why I gave him the HB items. I said, "Just bid on this so it'd be fair with the other two."
So what he bid on when he resubmitted was the exact same list that the others got?
Yes.
Okay.
Dave, do you want to move this part up?
Sure, I'll let you come up.
Can you switch those, um, switch those up?
Okay.
So Andrew, introduce yourself so we know, they will know who you are.
So I'm Andrew LaPointe, I'm also on the Cable Committee. On what you were asking, Select and Goulart, Integrated Solutions initially responded with a smaller list, while HB and Valley both responded to that list, but also added suggestions of equipment that we should purchase to be more efficient. To keep that fair, we returned to ISG and asked them to resubmit at that same equipment.
The same list?
Yes.
With the expanded?
Yeah, the expanded.
We know prices, so we keep it, we kept it fair.
Other than that, I'm just here to talk about general information. What we'd like to purchase is a Cablecast server system that will put us into the digital age, will catch up with the tele, the television productive, production standards of around here. As Dave was saying, it would allow us to get in remotely, so say we were not, say we had a snowstorm, we were not able to get in, one night, we can fix things and run things from home. It will keep, it will, this company will give us a video-on-demand system, which is Selectmen's Agribas, your YouTube channel. This will run almost like that, so that could possibly eliminate the need to...
No competition though, right?
No competition.
Okay.
Um, it will give us a web presence, Cable will get a small website for this company, with this company.
Yeah.
Is this all within these bid prices?
Yes. This system was, this entire system...
No, geez. You can sell them to with this.
Um, this, this entire system, which includes the Cablecast system and its sister Carousel, all three companies bid on this system.
And this is for whoever, Andrew or Dave, whoever can answer, does anything included in this new equipment that needs to be purchased, the refitting equipment? Do we have what's necessary to extend video recording capability to Old Town Hall, or did we already have that?
My understanding that the town was gonna come up with their own bid on that and work with them, you know, at the time, don't quote me on this, I checked with them once and said they weren't ready yet to date into the road, so we decided to wait on it.
So, but for the time being, for example, zoning board will be over there, they're still gonna have their one meeting a month here, correct? For, just until everything gets set up over there?
Yeah, we can, we can cameras over.
Okay.
That's why this system, we, we get a chance to build up on that too. The other thing too, I should mention it, we're gonna need some work done, like, we're gonna need like three internet ports, ethernet ports, so it'll be like three jacks, so they're gonna be going from the office over to where the switch is, you know where the switch is, so.
Yeah, well, you know what my concern is though, now that we're mentioning all this, that you might need a little bit more space, is there, 'cause it gets very hot down there, I've been there when you got, when everyone is recording.
Right.
Is there, and you have more members than you've ever had, since at least I've been here, is there enough space in that little tiny room?
It gets warm down here. I mean, there's space down here, but I heard we had a chance to maybe expand when some of the departments move over. I know you got a...
Yeah, we're gonna have to put you on hold here.
Do you mind just waiting a little bit, we had a poll here?
Sure.
We need to go to.
We have to start this meeting.
Thank you for your time, we'll wait.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now let's go back, thanks. We'll go back to the poll hearing for three new polls on Cedar Street, and I guess...
Thank you for coming. Could we have your name and your, who you represent, please?
Yeah, Michael Fraser, National Grid.
And do you also speak for Verizon tonight?
Uh, sure.
Usually, 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 I'll call her the Verizon lady comes and she does everything, so it's Michael Fraser?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so, petitioned install new, three new jointly-owned polls on Cedar Street, poll three dash fifty, ten dash fifty, and thirteen dash fifty. Those are two, part of a reconducting project along Cedar Street, which will involve replacing pretty much every pole on the wire for reliability purposes.
So the poll, excuse me, the polls are on William Street or Cedar Street? Looks like they're on, they're on William Street.
No, no, I...
Four hundred feet, four hundred five feet west of the center line of Williams.
Okay, yeah.
For reconducting.
For reconducting, senior, okay, just wanted to make sure I understood it.
And those are just two, those new polls are for, to eliminate the longer spans.
Yeah, right, okay, and, they all there is to it, or?
That's all there is to it.
You don't see any problems with it? Are you guys here? If you're like there to say something, no, just wanted to...
Just curious what it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Are the new polls gonna be located next to the existing polls, or are these completely new locations?
Either in the same hole or, or right next to it.
Okay, and you are gonna remove eventually the double pole?
That would be Verizon.
Do you have any other input, like questions?
I really am, I don't have any concerns other than the double pole, so I'm glad you asked that. A lot of times, so are you saying, I, I missed what you said, is that Verizon's role after you place it?
Yeah, so we'll install the poles, we'll transfer everything of ours over, and then whereabouts is on the pole where they're...
Right. And I know there's an order of who goes when.
Yeah, top to bottom, so.
Yep.
Then once Verizon transfers over, they'll take out these, the pole stuff.
Are there any transformers on these poles? Are they straight just poles?
I'm sure there's transformers, count them, but...
You can count, I can get another.
No, 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 I was just wondering. Now, the other, the other question I have is the poles in, around town that have been replaced, for example, all the ones that were put on Center Street when the bridge was built and all that, the poles that are in there now are very much taller than existing poles, and you're on the top of the pole, okay? Is there a reason why those poles are so high now, as opposed to all those shot ones we have in other places?
Over the, I mean, a lot of the older poles were, standards have changed, safety reasons, the, you know, cable company has enough space between ours.
And also limbs and things like that, so the, the pole, the real tall ones seem to eliminate a lot of problems with overhang of, of trees and that, because of the trimming things that they do, you know?
Yeah, that's part of the reason, and then, you know, the safety clearances, just for the workers that climb up the poles.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, any questions, no?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the request of National Grid slash Verizon to replace, to install three new poles on Cedar Street identified as, identified as three dash fifty, ten dash fifty, and fifteen dash fifty.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or Carrie's.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fraser.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
We just need to sign, uh...
Okay.
All three, the three copies, yeah. Okay, um...
Seventy?
Huh?
Sit back to seventy?
Yeah, once you come and finish what you got, what do you wanna tell us?
Why don't you take that next podium up?
So, I, just one last question.
Sure, sure.
So, if we want, I just wanna be very clear, if we want boards to be able to have meetings over at Old Town Hall, what we will need as a board of selectmen is to prepare a warrant article for the annual town meeting to purchase that equipment?
Well, I think at one time when Ed was more full-time, I shouldn't say Ed, it was Access in Hampshire, they were gonna take care of it.
Putting in the line, right?
Putting the line and everything, and I believe it was gonna be a T-one liner, like fiber optic's gonna run through, and we're gonna have endings and everything.
Yep.
And then, I don't know, I think we fell with them, because when those guys left, we decided to change over, it's always we had to renegotiate all over again to get that contract. I believe there was never a figure for that.
Okay.
But going forward, we can probably work with this group, 'cause I know we do most of the work ourselves.
Integrated?
ISG, yes.
That's a separate thing from what you're proposing.
Right, right, separate, of course. One more thing I wanna say before Andrew speaks, we will need three dedicated ethernet ports to come through, so we're gonna need them from the office going to where the switch panel is. Now, I did look at the switch panel tonight, and they wanna make note of it, basically what happens is, 'cause I work for a government facility, when you patch in, you usually go to a patch panel, then goes to a switch, which goes off to Verizon, whatever, I noticed, and I'm gonna be wrong 'cause it's knocking here, I noticed that the switch panels, every, every, every switch is taken. So it might be another switch.
I know Jim has been working with you on...
Right, and Jim told me to bring it up tonight too, that's the only thing, so...
We just need to...
We'll go forward from there. Now, I guess he's gonna work with electrician, I'll shoot him an email, and I'll let him know about the switch too.
Can I ask you a question? Is the reason you're doing the internet, the ethernet holes, is that because there's no Wi-Fi down there? There's no internet?
Well, what happened, we had internet, we had an internet down there one time, and then they pulled the wire off, saying it was a bad wire, so right now, we're working on the wireless down there, which keeps dropping, and a lot of times, we had to tether up our phones. So we, we don't even have a phone working down there, 'cause we get like a DNS issue.
Yeah, so once he gets this, yeah, we should be all set.
I'm sorry, as part of, this seems like, there's like mega project, it could be just one project instead of these little piecemeal, 'cause you could just add a drop down there for your wireless issue potentially, add the three ethernet ports, which would require the additional switch, right, is that right?
Right.
And then, whatever work would be required for Old Town Hall, could you do one warrant article, or we, I guess, the town do one warrant article and fund it all at the same time?
We don't need a warrant article, because it's already been, gone to, gone to special town meeting.
The Old Town Hall as well?
Well, I don't know, but I don't think that's gonna require a warrant.
No, what was voted was twenty-five thousand dollars to do what they wanna do, but we'd probably need money for additional work.
Well, that's, it's, you have snowballs a little, so it would just add to that account, but...
But, and I know this is sort of unrelated, but I just wanted to comment, 'cause I know Select and Goulart, we're, we're gonna work on seeing if we can expand fiber optics, so my thought would be, maybe we don't need to run a wire if we're just gonna have fiber optic on this campus.
In any case, before any, he, they need to update that equipment, 'cause it's, it's dysfunctional, it's breaking down.
Well, like I say, every week we walk down, we lost this year, like two weeks ago, so now we're down with the laptops in there, and it's kinda...
So if this would be approved and acceptable with the town accountant, can we perhaps meet, and maybe Jim can be a part of that conversation, and we can roll out our future plans?
That'd be great.
'Cause I know we've talked about it, but yeah, there needs to be a long, longer-range plan, because those two, two of those consoles down there are older than the...
It's almost like if we can get like a small committee, just, you know, call it the, the refitting committee for now, you know, and figure out...
That would just be a subcommittee, correct me if I'm wrong, Select and Goulart, that would just be a couple people on Cable Committee who work on that, like a task.
Be us or a four, whatever, and just go forward with it.
Absolutely.
I feel more confident or comfortable if I had like someone on the town side knowing what I'm doing, and I know what you're doing, and we have this communication going back and forth.
Come visit me, as much as you like.
It sounds good.
See you Monday through Thursday.
That's right.
Where are you going for that? I wanna make sure we got apples to apples here, 'cause I see the Integrated Solution Group, and then I see the, the Valley one, and then I see the one in the back, and this one has optional recommended additional equipment. So, is...
I think that's what they were saying about the suggestions, remember?
I wanna make sure, when we look at this though, are we looking at the same thing? Because if you don't put that additional equipment, it's only thirteen thousand, if you put that eighteen thousand additional equipment, then it jumps up to quite a bit, and then you have ten thousand dollars of...
Now, the way we looked at it, like for Valley, he was just concentrating on refitting the server itself, I mean, it wouldn't be nice if he was gonna do the cameras up here through two consoles, but when we looked at the contract, am I right, he was basically looking at the server itself, the broadcast of Channel Nine. You know, someone suggested if they bid that high, it's like, we're gonna throw a high figure out there, they want us to come, if not, we're just gonna walk away.
So Integrated Solutions, does this include all of the technical support necessary to install it, get it up and running?
Yes.
Okay.
And the other thing too, I forgot to say, and really Andrew speaks, I'm taking his time, is we can have some sort of rapport with Seacock and Taunton, because if we have a problem or renewed the system, we can contact them, say, "Hey, how do you guys run this system, you know, what are we missing here?" So hopefully, we'll get something from this too with the other towns.
I like that idea, because that's exactly what I did. Remember, I called West Bridgewater before we did the website, because they were using the same vendor that we wanted to choose. So I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I'm just here to answer any of your final questions. We've been told by the vendor that we voted on as cable, ISG, if this is approved, we will be down for one full day for installation, that'll be it.
That's good, that's very good.
Okay, efficient and cheap, we like that.
So what'll happen, well, we'll have to vote on this, and then we'll have to go to the town accountant to review all the papers.
Okay, so the accountant, she looks at it for the, for a final approval, and then...
Yeah, well, just to make sure everything's in order.
Contracts in order.
So we'll, so I think what I'd like to do...
If you vote subject to her.
Vote subject to her, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion now, the bid to provide the cable equipment as outlined to be given, be awarded to Integrated Solutions Group at a bid price of nineteen thousand dollars, subject to approval of the procurement liaison.
Second.
Nineteen thou, excuse me, nineteen thousand five hundred and seven dollars.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion Carrie's great.
Thank you, Selectmen.
Good work, General.
You're welcome. When you talk to Jen, the balance in the account, because it was twenty-five and this is nineteen, check with her, because depending on the wording of the motion, then you may be able to expend that additional money. Sometimes wording in motions is restrictive, so she can tell you whether or not you can spend the rest of it.
Right, if we get another console for downstairs, that's...
I don't think it was restrictive though, because I, I don't think it was restrictive.
No, it wasn't restrictive.
But just double-check with her, but I don't think it was, so.
All right, good, thank you though.
Before you leave, I just wanted to say, thank you so much for all that you do, just so everybody who's watching knows, yes, I did work with them on creating the YouTube channel, but for the last couple months, they have been uploading all the videos, so this is a Cable Committee operation, so we should definitely thank them, and I do, thank you so much for all that you do.
Appreciate your support.
Absolutely, always.
That was item three B, right? What about seven A?
Yeah, we're gonna go to that next.
Are they involved with seven A?
Yes.
I just wanted to get one of them downstairs so they can help out.
Okay, okay.
So, we're gonna back up now to, to cable license renewal process, and I gave this to Mallory on Monday, and then I went home.
So I reviewed...
It's great.
That's how it is now. No, I reviewed it, so for the members of the public, the town has a contract with Comcast as a cable provider to provide all of you service, and Channel Nine, and as part of that contract, the town gets money to make sure everything's up and running and offer these great programs that we have. So that contract's for ten years, and it's coming up in 2020, and under the Department of Telecommunications, we have to renegotiate it every ten years, and there's a process to follow. So I am not ashamed to say, I am not an expert in cable. So I did review this, I know how, what are, what the town's responsibilities are, I do have limited experience with this in West Bridgewater, in 2009, they had to redo the contract, and now ten years later, it's almost coming up, so they're at it again, they've used this attorney, his name is Bill Solomon, he was great, and I've found out the information, which I, I did give to Karen for tonight, about what they expended, how many hours he expended in doing it, and his rate is a hundred and seventy dollars an hour, but somebody so proficient as he is, he has many years of experience doing this, would probably find way more success than I would, and I don't wanna speak for you, Dave, but if you, you know, wanted to step up, if you have the time, of course, I'd be willing to work with you, however, I do understand, you have a full-time job yourself, so I don't know if the town is willing to look at hiring an outside vendor to handle this for us, where it is a ten-year contract, and could negotiate the best deal possible for us.
So is rate still one seventy?
Well, that's what West Bridgewater got, and I did include a copy of it.
That was in 2009?
And, and currently, but of course, I don't have the list of his hours right now, because obvi, you know, he's not done, he's still working on it.
Okay, but you think it's, it's one seventy?
Comparable.
Right now, and the...
So the total, correct me if I'm wrong, Town Administrator, was about...
Seven thousand, seven thousand, that, plus that.
Yeah, it was a little over seven thousand.
Did the selectmen in West Bridgewater at the time find that, even though it's an expenditure, that it was money well-spent, because the contract is so long, my concern would be making an oops in a ten-year contract, and then we're, you know, bound to that.
Absolutely. I do believe they found, I mean, they've, you're using him again, so I think that they really liked what he did. I remember when he came in, he was unknown, everyone was like, "Well, I don't know," and they did decide to go for it. They have a very active cable commission with a cable station manager, and then still opted to go with him, and they negotiated a good deal with Comcast there. I'm not afraid to delve into it, this is not, you know, I just know that my skill set in, in dealing with cable specifically is limited, and I just wanna make sure the town's set up in the best way, so if, and it seems short money for what you get, you get like tens of thousands of dollars from Comcast eventually, so.
Seven dollars over ten years, we're talking kind of seven bucks a year.
So, to me, I think it's worth it, and you get a professional and someone who is experienced and knows the lay of the land, will be, you know, I envision my position to grow and grow and grow in the coming months, for sure, so I wouldn't be able to...
So I, what I would recommend...
I have one question though, before we make any recommendations, what hap, you might know this too, 'cause you were a selectman, what, how were these contracts negotiated before? Like who did, how did it work in 2010?
Well, I have a question for you on that, because I know in the past, this is before all the regulations came in, the committee, I believe, worked this out with Comcast, they sort of got the first contract.
But that was Mr. Ready and Mr. Only, correct me if I'm wrong, who created the Cable Committee?
No, I think Ron Smith too might have had something to do with that.
That was ten years.
But none of those individuals are on the cable, so that would be...
I have one sitting on the board now, Ed Only, but the way he put it to me, I wanna say this correctly, if he had a run with it, he'd run it as a committee ourselves, but I don't know if that's, I know things have changed in the last three to forty years, 'cause there's a lot of regulations involved where, you know...
And I, I'm certainly not trying to take this away from the Cable Committee, but I just wanna throw it out there that this service exists, it is beneficial in my opinion, and somebody who has a direct line to the Department of Telecommunications and is used to filing all of these forms...
I think what we should do is...
And then I can of course call him and get a real quote if you wanna explore it.
That's what I was gonna say, probably oughta do that, Dave, do that, and then we'll come back and...
The first thing you have to do is contact David, gay, town council, and get permission to use other councils.
Outside councils.
I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but you always do that.
Absolutely.
You need some muscle on this. What does the first meeting with Comcast and stuff, the process?
Either, as part of this letter, either we reach out to Comcast and say, "Hey, we're ready to continue," or they do it to us. We're a pretty proactive community, I'd say, so we have no problem reaching out, but of course, if we're gonna explore hiring council, you know, we gotta wait a little bit, but, and then he would handle all of that, he would handle holding the public hearing that's required. To everybody watching, the town does have their input period, so he would handle that, we would post it, hold it here[1743.82] So he would handle that, we would post it, hold it here in a public building, but he would be the professional there.
The other thing to be aware of is that in a new contract, there cannot be an exclusivity clause because we've got this fiber optic thing coming in through TMLP.
We want some flexibility.
So I wish we could put it out to bid and get other providers, quite frankly, that's a personal opinion.
Well, part of the process is actually talking about, it doesn't have to be Comcast, that's just the renewal process. If part of the process is talking about is Comcast delivering the services we want, is it meeting our needs? Do we wanna look elsewhere? That's part of the process.
I'm just thinking of consumer complaints we've had over the years. Yeah, so, you know, that's just, that's just a comment, but-
The concern, I called Verizon, FiOS, and basically begged them to come to town, like, they're not gonna do it.
So I have direct experience with that. They will only go where they wanna go and I believe that they overcommitted themselves in certain regions and now they're just trying to catch up. My personal home is actually outfitted for FiOS, but I don't use it, I use Comcast. I've w- gone back and forth and the prices are exactly the same. And I really don't love going up against either Titan personally as a consumer, so. But I agree, you know, everyone likes it for the options and there should not be an exclusivity clause in it.
And the thing with the, when, when we get our fiber optic connection with TMLP, it's gonna be a limited connection because it's the schools and hopefully it's gonna be this campus. It's not, and maybe some people on Center Street might-
To tie into it.
But other than that, it's not like we're bringing new cable company in town, so it's just-
I just have a question for you.
Excuse me.
The only thing, like, if you go Verizon or somebody else, I think Comcast, I could be wrong on this, I think Comcast gives a lot to a peg station far as the equipment. If you go to Verizon, I don't think they give you anything.
Lessons not gonna come here, they're not gonna come here.
Those are the issues that need to be discussed.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They won't come here.
And then that charge is in the contract, right? That amount they talk about?
Yes, there is money, yes, there is, yeah, yeah.
You know, the other we have to talk about too, this percentage that's on your cable bill that goes to is a peg station, I think it's one percent. Okay, and I know sometimes that can go up or you can keep it to the same rate, something to talk about.
There really are no other providers that wanna come into a town our size. And even though TMLP services Berkeley, they're not looking to expand either. They're only looking at the, if you will, the household level, they're not interested. They're looking at the kind of things they're doing with schools and institutions. So there is no other game in town.
Unfortunately, yeah.
Okay, so you'll get ahold of him.
Absolutely, I just-
Come back in there.
Basically looking for authority to delve in there.
Sounds good.
Do we need to officially table this?
Yeah, well, can you just make a motion to explore hiring outside council for negotiating the contract? That way it shows that we're taking action on the contract.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to allow our town administrator, along with consultation with the Cable Television Committee, to explore the possibility of entertaining outside council for the purpose of the renewal process of the cable license.
Second.
Okay, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Got it.
Thank you and good work, good work, Mr. Marvel.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next item is to ratify the town administrator's contract, so. We think she's done okay the last two days.
We'll give her a call if we're gonna do this.
It's at least good through the end of the week.
Oh, good. The only thing I did notice, and it's not a big deal, I, you know, I'm totally ready to sign this, but it says in there five goals per year, which to me is a little lofty. So can we drop it down to four? One for each of us, we each come up with a goal? It's four goals per year to continue, is there?
The goals are something you're supposed to establish, not us.
Do you want us to decide for you?
Oh, you don't want input on goals? I just assumed that we would all come up with goals together.
The goals are, the goals are for you to draft and let the board know and we will discuss it. And in the course of discussion, it may be something that you don't need to do five this year or you give us five and we say, you know what? Forget this one, this situation has come up and this is something we really want you to focus on. But we're looking for input from you.
Sure, and I love to give my opinion, my husband will say that. I, I just, well, five kind of made me scared because I feel that, I wanna be able to meet them and I, growing into this role, so in my first three days, I know that-
It won't be five for this year.
Right, it's two for this year.
You don't even have a whole year.
For these couple of months.
A few months, but it's very clear that the town has been ready for a town administrator, which I love, but I just wanna be able to look at this in a practical way and I think five might be a little much, but sure.
I wanted it to be your choice because you are gonna be the, you're the only town administrator we have. So you're the only person who's gonna really understand what's gonna be possible as the town administrator and what isn't. So I wouldn't want you to be beholden to what I think is possible.
Oh, so I was thinking, well, you would each have a goal of where you want the, I'm trying to-
We'll discuss it with you, but it's, it's your-
The question is, should it be five or should it be four? That's not a strong question.
I'm more comfortable with four, but if you're firm on five, it's not enough to bother me, so.
I don't care either way, if you want it to be four.
I don't know, I have no problem. The other thing too is the town administrator coming in the first time. I think it would be very beneficial for us and any future boards that you come in and look at this town and you see things that you say, that needs to change, that needs to be brought, or you see something that's not here and it becomes your goal, one of the things that I wanna do is-
When there's a gas station, gas station for our fleet.
We used to have our own tanks, ideally, when they leaked.
We're just gonna make a-
You can ratify it based on whether that changes or not.
Yes, you can.
Change in initial.
Change in initial?
Change in initial, I'm okay with that, it's on camera, being recorded.
Can't deny any of this.
Okay, so.
The town full of witnesses.
So we're gonna change that.
I didn't go first.
We don't want me doing this, but.
But we know that.
No, you don't want me doing it, I use red on everything.
You won't be able to read it.
I have blue if you want.
So I just change it to four. I'm gonna just initial that. And I think, you know, as, you know, being the first one, we're gonna have some growing pains to figure out this whole thing out, so we don't wanna.
Okay, can I have that back? Because I've got one area I wanna bring up. I had mentioned this to you before. I know what it's like to be a career woman, I know what it's like to have all the responsibilities that go with everything. And I'm not looking for special privileges because you are a woman. The thing, the concern that I have is you have a forty-hour work week and it says that you have to attend certain meetings, you'll get comp time, blah, 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 blah. My own personal feelings are that within the work week, other than the town meeting, which is over and above, whenever we have them, thank goodness we don't have them very often. I feel that meetings you must attend, budget meetings and all that should be part of the forty-hour work week and you should be able to manage that because you've got to manage your workload. And what I have seen in the past is people who have comp time quite often never get to take it, which is wrong.
I think that, I mean, that would be my intent as well. I mean, the intent with that is just to say that we're not gonna expect her to come in, you know, like, like today, come in at eight o'clock in the morning, work till nine o'clock at night and not make any adjustments. So I think that's what that's-
Well, that's what, that's why I feel that the wording should be something to the effect that her schedule's gonna be flexible, all right? It's not gonna be cut and dry, you must be here at this time and whatever, it's not gonna be- But based upon the, not only the meetings she has to attend at a given time in the year, but also whatever she is working on, and quite frankly, I see the possibility that within managing the workload and the duties and everything else, there may be periods of time when she is working from home. Because I truly believe she needs that flexibility. And so my concern is that if within this contract, uh, it makes you work, we attend all meetings, board, da, 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 da.
I disagree with anything you're saying, I agree, I think, I think my concern would be that there should be something solid enough in there because we're not gonna be here.
That's exactly what I'm looking for, absolutely.
And I don't wanna get in a situat- I don't wanna put you in a situation where the next person comes in and says, you're not getting any comp time, this is part of your job and you work sixty hours a week.
Meetings of other boards or committees of the town, as the board may direct, are which are relevant to the France and the duty of the town accountant. See, the problem I have with this, this says she will be granted comp time for additional hours. That tells me that's over and above forty and I'm saying, I'm not comfortable with that. The town meetings, that's gonna be beyond the forty.
And that's listed in there.
Right, but my concern is the way this is worded, okay? I'm, I'm putting myself in this position, quite frankly, I'm looking at how to manage this and I'm saying to myself, so you list all the stuff she has to do, she's working forty hours, meetings and all that. She'll be granted compensatory time off during her basic work week. My problem is compensatory time relates to working over and above scheduled hours and I don't wanna put her into that situation.
I don't think that's what that means, I mean, I don't think I would interpret it that way because it already defines she has a forty-hour work week.
I don't interpret that as, I just interpret that as if she works additional hours, she would accrue the comp time, am I wrong?
And what I'm saying to you is, I want her to have the flexibility that within the forty hours, she will do her assigned duties and also attend the meetings necessary, with the exception of town meeting. That, my concern is that, the way that's worded, that's a forty plus and that's not what my intent is when we discussed this, all right? The plus comes in with the town meetings, not with finance committee, not with, like, if we have a committee or-
I understand what you're coming from.
Wouldn't it, so if I were to attend a finance committee, you know, these people have jobs, so I'm just assuming that the meetings would be at night.
Yeah, they will be.
So if I have to go, I have to go.
No, no, attendance is not my concern, yes, you have to go.
But, yeah, but you're, the idea from my perspective is that, okay, you would, you could come in at ten o'clock that morning.
Oh, because I'm, I see, so because I'm making up the hours at that meeting, for instance.
For example, if you had a finance committee meeting tonight, you would've come in whatever time you came in this morning and you would've stayed because you're not gonna go home, that's prohibitive. But by the time you're, you're approaching the Thursday, all right? You would be approaching forty hours and not be over forty hours. Over forty hours would mean comp time and what I'm saying to you is, I'm looking at forty hours with the exception of town meetings. Now, as I said, there may be times when you say, I've got a deadline and I've got a meeting, but you manage your time and it doesn't have to be in each week. This is how I worked before.
I think that we, we can look at that because I, I would agree because this, the way that I, now they look at it, it says, time off during the basic work week for all such additional hours.
But see, additional hours-
I know, that's what I agree, I agree with you, I agree with you. So let's, let's take a look at it and reword it and come up with something and then we'll-
To me, forty hours is forty hours. You need flexibility for, to manage the workload, you need flexibility. You may get up some morning and town hall is closed, okay? But you got a project you're working on and you can do it from home and you make the decision. I'm working on this at home.
So let's, so let's have a motion to table this and then, and then come up with some additional wording and then bring it back next week.
Okay, I motion that we table the town administrator's salary for one week, excuse me, town administrator's contract for one week, so it'll be on the agenda for next week.
Second.
Okay, further discussion, so the problem, the only concern I have is where, that's the only outstanding issue. So we need to get her paid.
Oh, she can get paid.
Okay.
There's something to change her status.
I, I know that, but I just, let's, let's-
How long have we been paying the fi- the police chief without a contract?
Let's, okay, let's, let's modify that mo- or let's make that motion because I don't wanna get into this thing, there's no contract, no pay.
No, oh, that's, no, no, her pay started with her appointment.
I understand that, but, but the only place that her pay is, is specified is in that contract. So I want like a, a motion that we accept the contract with the, and we'll just reword that.
Withdraw the second.
Second withdrawn.
All right, motion withdrawn. Mr. Chairman, let me have that, could I have that contract? I need the dollar amount. Mr. Chairman, I move that we table ratification of the town administrator's contract for one week and that she be compensated. And that she receive a weekly salary, weekly salary prorated for the fiscal year 2018 based on the annual rate of one hundred thousand dollars per year.
Okay, all favors say aye?
Aye.
So Karen, could you just put a memo together that affects that's been approved here and get it down to Jen so we don't have a? Okay, the next item is, did Dayton Police paid our discrepancy? Did you guys both get a chance to look at that?
I did.
I read the explanation, I really don't know why this is on the agenda, I thought the explanation covered it.
Well, no, the que- Well, the question is, are these police officers, we're gonna recoup the money from them or we, or is the town just gonna cover it? That's the issue.
Well, the explanation I saw would indicate to me, based on everything they said, that the reason that they left the detail is, was based on the contractual language in the collective bargaining agreement, okay? Well, the obvious thing is, that should've been looked at first because if you couldn't cover the whole detail, you shouldn't take it upon, or you should've lined somebody up, but that didn't happen. Because the contract has entered into this explanation, I, I don't see, and I'm only talking, quite frankly, I'm only talking about the town employee. I don't know what we do about the other one.
Oh, we don't care about the other one.
But I don't see any way around this if in effect, he could not complete the detail without violating the contract and he couldn't get a substitute to come in.
Right.
That's a catch.
I just wish this whole thing had been reported correctly when it was reported and then we wouldn't have gotten involved with whoever ordered it. I know who ordered the detail, but, so.
But I think the lessons have been learned, you know, for going forward.
So the ques- so I'm not, so you, you're, are you saying that the town should, should just?
Well, the town's already paid it.
Absorb the, no, the town, yeah, the town has paid it. So we just absorb that cost rather than put it back to the police office to recoup it.
Which is why she said she didn't understand why it was on the agenda.
It wasn't on the agenda because the town accountant has refused to, it keeps going back to Bob McDonald wanting-
No, but has she seen the latest explanation? Because I didn't see that until just now.
The last email was from November twenty-eighth, so I'm not sure. That was her last, the town accountant.
Bob has talked to a lot about it, so, it doesn't matter.
What I'm saying is, right now, Mr. Chairman, regarding the shortfall in the police detail account for the coverage on, and we'll have to plug in the date-
Yeah, right.
-of the detail. It, I move that the town cover the cost for the period of time involved.
And not expect the police officers involved or?
No, just, just the town covers it, period.
Second.
Okay, all favors say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we did D already, right?
I guess, I guess we'll need also a memo just to get that.
Exactly what I just said.
What happens going forward if this happens again?
Well, I think-
This isn't like a blanket.
This only happened, I mean, this is very odd event.
This is, we're only dealing with one instance.
Yeah, this is not-
I think that the, I'll say the scheduler, because I don't know what else to call it. Somebody is assigned scheduling details. Whoever assigns, schedules and assigns details has got to make sure that whoever is assigned can cover, whether it's four hours or if by any chance something happens and they can't leave, can they actually stay for the additional time? Or if they say, well, I can do four hours, but if something happens, I can't cover the rest. Scheduling has gotta line somebody up.
And we haven't had, this has never happened before, as far as I know, so I don't think, I don't think we need to put anything in place, I think it's gonna-
No, I'm not proposing we put anything in place, but things happen all the time, like, we, we need, you know, we need to at least consider the fact that it could happen again in the future, what are you gonna do?
Anyone given the assignment has to assure the scheduler they can cover it. But it's not only people from this town because we, that particular detail, we had two other towns involved.
Right.
And if, if, in case one of them, we know one of them, an out-of-town person left, that person, when Dayton called to schedule, should've said, I can only work X hours.
I agree.
Okay, so we move on. Next thing we have is the structural organization and this, with Mallory being here, I think we need to just all get on the same page about how-
Can, can we just, is D, did we already, we get this on here three times, I think, D?
Yeah, we did that.
Is that done?
That was cable, yep, they came in.
It's all done. And we now have the structural organization. So I just think we need to get everybody on the same page, so how things flow.
Everything should flow through the town administrator.
Okay, I, I would agree, I think-
And what she thinks is pertinent that requires, for example, a policy that the board of selectmen need to adopt, then it comes to us. But, you know, every, we all may have different opinions, so we should all speak.
Okay, and my opinion is exactly that, I just think we need to be careful that we as a board, because as I've described before, we are the board of directors, she's the CEO. So we have to be careful that we don't go out to department heads or whatever and say, I want you to do this and that. And if department heads come to us, we need to make sure that they've gone to Mallory to, you know.
I think the only thing we have to be- I think the only thing we have to be, um, careful, let's say, or prudent about is, the difference between an appointed department head and an elected department head.
Oh, sure.
Okay? Obviously, if an appointed one comes and says, "What about the whatever?", we'll say, "You should talk to Mallory about that." If an elected official comes forward and says, "What", it may be the same thing, okay. Um, best way to handle that is start with Mallory. Okay, by the same token, if it's who knows what, we'll say, "Oh." Or if they're insistent, they gotta talk to the board about whatever, okay, that's fine, you know, but she's still gonna be in the loop.
Even in that case, I think, um, if it's this, if it's a decision that the, that elected official doesn't have the authority to make, then I think it should, they should come to Mallory.
Well, all I'm saying to you is, if they approach the board first, we can still involve Mallory and say to the person, if they bring it to us, we say,
I'm fine.
"We're gonna assign this to Mallory."
As long as, well, as long as we all agree to that, I think that's fine.
But I think what you're getting at is, the difference between elected and appointed is, the elected officials are elected with their own authority over their own department. So I told, we, we obviously have to be respectful.
And technically, they don't report to anybody.
Right.
Correct.
The voters.
But, we, we haven't had that problem, everybody works together, but, and the other thing too is, we don't wanna give anybody the impression that now we have a town administrator, you can't get to the board of selectmen.
That's right.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
We don't want that to happen.
But when someone comes to me with an idea, I'm gonna, A, ask if they had run it by the town administrator, and if not, I'll run it by you. And I would expect we would all do that.
Just need to make sure she's all, she's above you.
Just like we, we, just like when you go to a, um...
MMA meeting or something.
Yeah, and, and I'm not there, you always come and you give us a report at the meeting, so, you know, it'll be the same type of thing.
This is exactly how I envision it, and it seems to streamline it and make it, you know, everyone knows where to go.
Correct.
So I would only ask that this decision be written up in a memo, I think it'd be appropriate to be signed by the three of you, the full board, and distributed to the department heads, and CC to the elected officials, just so they know. It seems like that's how it's, um, running, I've been meeting, um, I-
We all sign it, correct? I don't mean to interrupt.
Yeah, I hope that you'd all sign it.
But you as well, right?
Nope, uh, just a message from you saying that I would be-
This is what we're gonna do.
The board's essentially, the board's liaison, and the person to go to if they have things to talk to us about.
I just thought of something we forgot to do today, Karen. We were gonna have copies of the Boy Scout thing available to all department heads, 'cause like, Jocelyn had a project and didn't know about it until Tommy got involved. So if we could just, um, email that out to all department heads, just so they all know, if they're approached for an Eagle Scout project, we gotta process, okay?
So let's get back to structural.
So, um, I've been meeting with each department head, I'm obviously not through the list, so if your department hadn't gotten to you-
Already, you've been here three days.
Yeah, I met with a good bunch of them so far, Tom and I got to hang out basically all day today, um, in our various meetings. Uh, but, uh, some of the questions that come up are, "Are you the person that I go to now?" So I said, "Well, we're talking about it tonight, so I'll let you know." Um, so it is good to communicate it, and, um, I obviously am ready and rocking and rolling already, so...
But I think it makes your job easier, knowing that everything's being run through you, you're not, where everybody's on the same page, we all have the same information.
And a, and a message to the public, this doesn't take away any power from the board of selectmen, it just becomes kind of an informational hub, um, and a, and a resource, so, um, my, my role is an advisory capacity, essentially, I'm gonna tell you, you know, what I think, my opinion, the liability you run, and then you'll make your decision, and whatever that is, I will implement, that's my role. So based on this discussion here, and please, each of you singly if you have different items you wanna add, I'll be taking some time to craft a job description, which will come, uh, come up at a subsequent selectman's meeting for approval.
Okay. The other thing about, around structural, is everyone is talking about the agendas for this meeting. And I think what has happened in the last few weeks, or it's been happening, but, that, um, people put things, wanna put, one, I mean, I'm talking about the three of us, we wanna put things on here, we wanna take, take things off. And I think that, um, and I don't wanna do this just because I wanna do it, but I think there needs to be a central person, I think the chairman of the board is really, should be, control this agenda.
But we have a Thursday cutoff, which we haven't on it either.
But here's the thing, this isn't, this isn't a power we grant to you, this, that, this power exists, your job is to be the agenda. But what has happened in the past, and I'm sure you will agree, is nine times out of ten, when one of us suggests something, it, it ends up on the agenda.
I know, I know, I know it does. But, um, but I just wanna make sure that we're not losing things or adding things that we're not ready for, or taking something off that somebody thought should be on there, so I just would like-
I'm, I'm happy with how it's been going.
The other thing, uh, speaking about the Thursday thing, I think, I know you tried to do that before, I think that's much too early.
No, no, we did that as a board, we, since you came on, we did that, but what happens, 'cause Thursday is the posting day, and we had said it's gonna be the cutoff day, but what we found is, it's really not working.
No, 'cause you marinate over the weekend and-
I think that's a lot of days, that's a lot of, it's almost a week.
Yeah, so I think we could, we could do it by having, seeing one day at noon.
One, you know, given the lunch hour.
So Karen has time to put it together, he posts it.
That's, that's the other thing, and I, I would like to say that, I think it's stressful for the administrative assistant to ha, and I understand things change, like once in a while, things are gonna change last minute, totally understandable, but it's easier for her to keep track of everything as well. If Monday, that's it, whatever happens goes on next week, done deal.
And you're meeting every week, so anything, it doesn't wait a very long time.
It is an emergency.
And emergencies are different. The, the way I envision it, and I think it's a good process, is Monday comes, we have a folder, whatever, a list of everything that's gonna go on it, uh, Karen and I work together to compile it, we run it by the three of you, and that's us sending an email, this is the agenda, please add your items, um, and then obviously the chairman is final approval, say so on it, and then-
The notification is good, 'cause one of the problems I have is, 'cause I'm in and out of here, I'm not here all the time, and it's like, what's on the agenda this week? And sometimes I find out Wednesday coming in here, and it's like-
Well, I read it on Monday, I read it Wednesday on my break.
So let's establish that as a part.
That's the policy. So my other question that kind of ties into this, so you're all kind of sharing one packet, do, do you want your own packets? Just of like, so it would be a copy of all the, I mean, yes, it's a lot of-
No, I don't think so.
That's just, just to address that, that's just because oftentimes, we're all reading and checking off the same document.
Yes, okay.
I'll remember it, so I don't necessarily need to like have it in front of me at the meeting.
I like to know everything that's gonna happen, but I also have to focus and say, "I gotta be ready to talk about that," 'cause maybe it's something I asked to put on the agenda, and it took mine to be ready.
But I think the Monday cutoff helps everyone be more prepared.
And organize. This is it, there's nothing that's gonna be added, so for sure. Monday at noon.
Yep, love it.
And hopefully, if we really get good at this, when it comes time for the town meeting, we will have our cutoff point, and Karen will be on it.
For that too, firm date. One thing I'd like to say-
Anybody wanna take a bet on that?
I do think it'll be, just so you know, in the summertime, we do go on a summer schedule, which means we have bi-weekly meetings, so there may, we may need just a wee bit more flexibility with the cutoff date in the summer.
Sure.
But otherwise, I mean, everything typically went a week.
Like so many things, we'll have to be flexible, but that's the goal.
And this is something I'm used to, we had the same sort, well, they met every other week, and their summer schedule switched to monthly. So I'm totally familiar with this, and-
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, update the design, uh, payment designation authorization form concluded on the-
Oh, going already?
Yep. Okay, yep. So what, what this is, it's just saying that I'm the designated person, and in my absence, Mallory, Selectman Goulart, or Selectman Zografas will have the authority.
Yeah, we do that on the finance committee, well, when I was on it.
Yeah.
Do we need to vote, is it, we're just gonna sign?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, um, can I have that for you?
Why don't we go sign, I'm near you, man. Why didn't you sign on the line?
Oh, I don't know. Give me a black pen, is that a black pen, that's why I'm having trouble, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that, uh, we vote to approve that the following individuals be listed on the payment designation authorization form, John P. Taylor, Nancy J. Goulart, Brett Ozografas, and Mallory Ehrenstein.
I second that.
Okay, will they say aye?
Aye.
I'll sign over there too.
She's covering all the bases.
I used to sign, uh, I was the, the second one on the finance committee. Only thing I was assigned was the dues bill for like a hundred and forty dollars, this, to pay MMA.
I only need to sign that one, 'cause there's nothing on it.
Well, there's no, there's, that's strange.
This is the exactly the same form.
They always, um, that's been, she always required a second copy.
I think she decided that wasn't the way you wanted it.
Oh, all right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, and let's, uh, move on.
Is con, is, um, do we expect Concom to be here for seven G?
No.
No?
So we, um, you were down there, why don't you just-
Yeah, I can give that report. The Conservation Commission met tonight, and the first agenda item was discussion of, uh, the Conservation Commission acquiring what we have identified as Council Oak Two land. Uh, this is land that, uh, is, um, between Elm Street and Council Oak Way, currently it's open farmland. It has been approved for a subdivision. This land has been offered to the town of Dayton, uh, it's eight acres, again, open farmland, and the owner, uh, G. Lopes, has offered this to the town of Dayton for $150,000. The total cost of the land is $300,000. The Taunton Development Corporation had approached G. Lopes, uh, maybe a month ago, and said if a buyer could be found for the land, the Development Corporation would contribute $150,000. So as of tonight, the Dayton Conservation Commission voted unanimously to approve spending $150,000 of their funds, and this will make us eligible for the other $150,000 from Taunton redevelopment. So what was going to be a housing development, a, I'll say controversial one, this is the land that's down around, uh, Council Oak, and, uh, this is going to become town property. Uh, I assured them that I had sent information to Attorney Gay and gave him a heads up. He wrote back and recommended that he saw no reason why the town should not pursue acquiring this property, and I will send him an email now and ask him to prepare a purchase and sales agreement. But that, I guess the good news for all the people that were concerned about the area around Council Oak, this property will not be developed, it will remain agricultural. As a matter of fact, one of the terms, uh, conditions to get the $150,000 from Taunton Development is that it must remain agricultural, so, uh, there will be places where there will be walking trails and things like that. But this property will belong to the town of Dayton, so...
I just wanna add to that, you know, uh, we really are grateful to G. Lopes, uh, for allowing this to happen, because they, the, the value to them for this property is about $450,000. So they've really contributed $150,000 of value, and we've contributed $150,000, and then the Taunton Development Corporation has $150,000. So it's really a, a good community effort, and I think it's, uh, I think we can't thank G. Lopes enough for letting this happen, because it's a tremendous acquisition for the town.
Steve, would you be placing a deed restriction for agricultural use as part of this?
The restriction comes through the $150,000 automatically, that's coming from Taunton, 'cause that's actually federal money.
Right, so it would be, it's going to be base, registered with the registry of deeds?
Yeah.
Everything, yeah, and, and Attorney Gay understood exactly what I was talking about, and I guess he's familiar with doing these things. Uh, I wanna thank Taunton, uh, redevelopment, I wanna thank G. Lopes. I especially wanna thank the Dayton Conservation Commission, because this was a big decision for them. They normally acquire property, like I think most people in town know, it's wetlands, it's, you're protecting, if you will, Mother Nature. I think the last acquisition that they got, uh, was pretty much all of Broad Cove. And, um, it was a hard decision for them to make to, uh, put this money up, and, uh, but anyhow, thank you, everybody who has worked on this. Besides the purchase and sales agreement, um, and our town administrator is familiar with, um, we will be looking for somebody to lease this property and to use it for agricultural purposes. We have, uh, just brief discussions, uh, we have four, let me say, perspectives, uh, who would probably be interested, but, uh, as Mrs. Ehrenstein mentioned, um, it goes, has to go out to bid to, to get the best lease. But anyhow, um, there will be no development at Council Oak, so I hope all of the people that had those concerns will now rest assured.
Right.
Well, I was definitely one of those people who had those concerns, I felt like the traveling, traveling band following the planning board around for two months.
Good acquisition.
Yeah, um, what I wanted to say, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, uh, is simply, again, thank you to the Dayton Conservation Commission, but also I wanted to thank everybody, um, who saw the value and the historic value of that land. It's not just Dayton history, there are many, many people in town who believe this is the nation's history, based on the stories, um, of the Native Americans, uh, who used to go there, uh, together. Um, so thank you so much, um, and I know I'll sleep a little bit better tonight, and thank you for attending, I appreciate that.
I never really followed this, because I heard you came back and reported repeatedly about what was happening.
It was, it was done. It looked done anyway.
But once the offer was made, I felt it was a good, it was a good thing to pursue, yeah.
Absolutely.
And on top of that, uh, what I've been told is that, uh, that Lopes also has a, some wetland property around town that they're gonna donate to the town.
Right.
So we don't know all the details of that.
Mr. Touch said that there, the development off of Old Wellington Street, there was a parcel that was supposed to be, part of it was gonna be a golf course, and evidently it's quite wet. And, um, he said there were seventy-five acres, I don't know if they're gonna donate the whole seventy-five, but he assured the Conservation Commission, they're willing to talk about donating a big chunk of, I'll call it wetland, 'cause that's what the Conservation Commission protects. So that's, that's truly a donation, so that's good.
Well, also, I wanted to thank the Taunton Development Corporation also for working on this.
Dick Schaefer, yes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Schaefer.
Thank everybody involved. Okay, let's move on to announcements, elected officials with expiring terms. Okay. We're required, how many times do we have to do this, three times?
I, we usually do it until the, uh, papers are issued, and then we do it like every other week or something, just to say, the deadline's approaching, you gotta file.
I remember it goes almost till election day, yeah.
So elected officials whose term expire are expired. And Board of Assessors, Joseph Sylvia, uh, three-year term. Uh, Board of Selectmen, Nancy Goulart, uh, three-year term. DR School District Committee, Christopher Andrade, three-year term. Uh, DR District School Committee, Glenn Jefferson, three-year term. Housing Authority, John Costa, it's a five-year term. Parking Recreation, Timothy Reins, that's a three-year term. Planning Board, Robert Woods, uh, it's a five-year term. Public Library Trustees, Allison Simblewski, three-year term. Sewer Commissioner, William Mendoza, three-year term. Town Moderator, William McKeon, one-year term. And a tree warden, Thomas Ferry, a three-year term. So the election, uh, is gonna be on April seventh.
Tree Warden has elected?
Yeah.
No, I did not, no, I, I did not know that. It's gonna be a contentious race.
So pay, uh-
The top spot in Dayton.
The election's gonna be April seventh, and I'm told papers will probably be available, nomination papers, uh, right after the first of the year.
The town clerk announced today that voting will be seven AM to five PM, so she's gonna open an hour earlier.
Closing hour later, right?
No, no, she goes eight to six. But people wanna get there and vote and go do this, it's a Saturday, so it's, they got children's events and ball and all that stuff. So seven AM to five PM.
Uh, and so, uh, the next announcement, just so everyone knows, I will put it on the website and Facebook, the Dayton Fire Department will host a one-hour presentation for older adults on fire and fall prevention at the Dayton Council of Aging, on aging, excuse me, 300 Lincoln Avenue on Thursday, December fourteenth, at 10:30 AM. All seniors are encouraged to attend.
Want to give the other announcements, or is your voice okay?
Oh, yeah. Um, a hundred percent better. Trash bags, shops, disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Call 508-669-6431 for more information.